Twenty nineteen dash oh six, admitting to twenty seventeen dash oh three, suspending permitted streets for ATV, up being permitted streets, uh, jury comments, and the public. What this is, for people don't know, back in twenty seventeen, we designated certain areas of the streets where you could ride your four-wheeler or side by sides, and what is supported here is that's to give more streets to travel on, one for the Mexican version, because this ATV thing has got real big. Now, I was out this week in that pure day V ATV park, there was probably, I'd get seven people with a jockey, I said my friend, as bad as blood, rainy, cold weather, we'd be right, right? Ocean's up north. I told them we should from using our mountain, and get the ten C mud back north, which I say here.
Yeah, and your hollows or something.
That's how it's ready, huh?
If you're gonna do it, I think it's a great thing, it's getting a lot of business into LaFollette, but if you're not gonna enforce the rules, what good is it?
What we mean, you.
Helmet laws, turn signals, the state laws, license tags.
We ain't no four wheeler, there is no turn signal on a four wheeler, or license, maybe it's side by side.
I know what Nick's talking about, and Nick, I'm in agreement with you. At some point in time, the Highway Patrol and the State Tennessee Attorney Chief have come to drop here, even though the legislature passed that regulation, they would not allow you to ride on the state highway, even with those components, the license plate, uh, the safety equipment, and the turn signals. That group, that's just got thrown out the door. Now, it's down to the safety equipment, and it works the ages off.
Helmet law. You had to have special, you had to have special cars to be on the four lane, turn signal, windshield wipers, insurance, you have a car.
They, even though they passed the legislature, they never, they, they didn't realize.
No.
They wouldn't allow it.
No.
Now, that state highway, they've never had state annual highway as much throughout there.
You did, I see a few people riding, riding helmets, I tell you, I told me, you know, a four wheeler, you don't have no turn signal, you know, you're made from the mounts.
Oh, I agree, that, that's what bothers me, is nobody knows you're gonna, you're side by side, with people you have to, you know, tank signals, to collect people over your, your, your.
There was a people who's traveled from Tank Springs, down to C C lines, stationed over here, now, how seem you want to make some reference, you know?
What we're gonna learn next year.
Now, how seem on the four lane, say true, have the four lane there, around the wall here.
We have a four, a four wheeler, not a side by side, a four leader, four wheeler runs back and forth in front of our store every day, probably forty-five, fifty mile an hour, that's as hot as he can get.
Over here, near?
Yeah, from Big Street down Indiana, across the four lane, and on toward Tank Springs. But it's a shame we live in a society where we have to enforce a law to make people wear helmets when they don't realize that it could save their life, but, you know, we could very well end up with hundreds of four wheelers and side by sides running around town here, causing all kinds of accidents. I'd hate to see us start having record for the most number of people killed on one.
You know, you get tax law back, you know, you don't be topping on the phone driving, you still be, takes you topping on the phone driving, you know?
We know, we can't take so much, but I agree, maybe we don't go on the back, but we'll probably like replace more with this, and if it becomes a problem, we'll like change it forward, very nice.
You see, you know, you see all these people in cages, or, 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 the guys stationed, must be as far as one of them, you know, for our, our.
It's always sort of, of the.
Stay in the, yeah. You know, I hate that should be entered into division, you know, I hate it for our seat. I know the same thought, but I hate it.
Like, how you traveling forward, and back, and, 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 all the time, we didn't have our seat.
I see you're gonna be interested, but you hate to tap it, you're right, you do. Or is there more comments? No more comments, okay. This is true, this thing carries, finished, alright, this means call the board, Bill, you get honored, firm patient, Bill, community, family, and everybody that's, she's more than just lost her loved ones, this is the price of, you know, Sam.
Have a follow on thank you, bless, fellow politician here today, Lord, and thank you for seeing the price of cost, and not our sins, to give the circumstances that we face. You know what we've gone through in this community, uh, listening to this door, was us the, uh, Southland Indian comrade Travis, we ask that you continue to, uh, bless his family, and his companions, at this time. We have been others that are, uh, have ill, illnesses, Lord, know what that, those illnesses are, we ask that people will be done in their life, and those that have lost loved ones, we ask that you continue, Lord, in their life, please, in times of need. Now, to continue with, uh, the speaking, Lord, we ask that you give the council, the business and knowledge that you have, have, make sound decisions, please, in this situation, then. Would, would you justify, if you can ask, uh, to do, uh, what this is, and, uh, one question, uh, if it is, if there is, uh, justice, uh?
Mr. Harter? Mr. Wilson? Here, here. Out of number four, approve your means for your November twenty-ninth, you mean, what you can say? Have a motion, Mr. Tom, have a say.
Say.
Say, um, Mr. Thompson, tell us.
Mr. Harter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kerry, I am notified, reporting your boards, your committees, your departments, which has a player. Have a motion, Mr. Wilson, have a say.
Say.
Say, Mr. Harter, tell us.
Mr. Harter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kerry, any comments for assistance? Right you want, comment?
Yes, Lord, she allows, uh, with the county, county honor guard, in the office, this commander, Don Chad, and, uh, Chaplain, uh, Sirad Hur, Joe Mash, but he's, uh, uh, I'm afraid, we were made aware, do an article that was put in the public press last week, that, uh, the honor guard came before the council down here, asking for money, to, uh, maintenance, our, our equipment, our, our buses, and that's not us, we are the honor guard, we, we're not the ones asking for money. Matter of fact, our buses, one of them is a two thousand and nineteen, it's a low mileage, and the other one is a two thousand and thirteen, with about fifty thousand miles, and we, we keep them up, we don't have to ask for them. You all do donate to us, time to time, and we definitely appreciate it, but we just wanted to let you know, that that wasn't us coming down here, uh, and you all were generous to, to give donations, but it wasn't to us.
It was, it was Jellicoe.
You see, one of many of, it was the American Legion, Jellicoe.
Jellicoe, please, don't guess.
It might be them over there, but we just don't believe that they, they using our name, and, I just, that's a problem, I'm saying, to use our.
They explain to us that money goes in pot, you know, everybody?
No, sir.
I didn't think so, because I've done checks, through the honor guard.
Yeah, it does not, we, we're separate, we're not a part, I am a, uh, senior vice commander for the A V S after one and five, but that's separate, it's not a part of the honor guard. Kevin Lawden, he's the service officer for the veterans of Campbell County, but he's not, he does not have anything to do with the Campbell County Honor Guard. Furthermore, the man that he had with him, Danny, he's not even a member of the Campbell County Honor Guard, and, and we just think you all need to know that, and that's a very misleading thing, that when they come that way, to ask for funds, you're asking for funds, that, that's not for the honor guard.
We, we, we especially the checks, Mark, to give to, uh, the chamber, the chamber, strip the money out of there.
Not that, it's, 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 remember?
It's, it's, it's coming, it's coming out, you all were gonna do that discretion thing, but, they, when they wrote the documents, they knew they, it was not a five oh one C three, four, six, so, they gave us a card, I called twice to their office, they didn't have one, as far as I know, and they haven't contacted us back, so, I think, uh, city administrator had sent a letter to the chamber, to give a letter for the honor guard, for the, the money for you all, plus a letter for the five hundred dollars for the downtown, and, uh, I've called, um, the chamber commerce twice, and they've missed us, and they've got voicemail, they haven't called back, so we haven't done anything yet.
That's what Jimmy told me, me being a Vietnam veteran, and most of these guys here, you know, we take care of our home, wherever it's, you know, LaFollette, Jellicoe, Lake City, trouble war, you know, and a guy's a Jellicoe, he come out here sometime, because I've seen a mayor, you know, but we take care of our homes, veterans.
But, but these two gentlemen that come in front of us has nothing to do with you, right?
Yeah, the ones that's been here before, you've been this later, they don't represent the, the Campbell County Honor Guard.
Gary, in that case, I want to resent my donation to whoever it was they were talking about, because I was understanding it, not the, the, the.
Well, well, that, that, when the chamber, when the chamber's seeing, that's, uh, when the chamber sees, it's actually supposed to go to the honor guard, but, but, we're gonna have to figure out the address where it goes to, because the chamber will be one, uh, once we, again, they'll be buying the check to honor guard.
Let's, they represent ourselves as the honor.
It would need to go to the county, uh, to, to.
Jellicoe.
The Campbell County Honor Guard, which that's us, it's not Kevin, because Kevin represents, and he's affiliated more with, with Jellicoe.
Right.
With American Legion, and these.
He's, he, Kevin, he, he.
You all have a, they have an address where the check would go to you all, the record, from, from the chamber?
Well, actually, actually, the check in camp is, it comes to leave, on the treasure.
Or you're all five oh one C three?
Yeah.
Okay, we don't need that, Terry.
Well, I need.
We've got two different groups.
Well, I need to get a copy, they're all five oh one C three, I need a copy.
I don't have a copy of it, now, I, I, I edit, who actually had that in the present. What's, I guess the question, that we were asking there, is there any way that you can retract what we read in the public press? The public are seeing this thing, and, and what makes it sound so bad? Other people gives us donations, funeral homes, and, and, different people donate to us, and that's put bad publicity, when they see us down here, like we're out there, you all, the money, to just to take care of our vehicles, we're sufficient, we take care of our own.
Just let you right here.
I'm gonna make a motion, we give them two hundred dollars of our discretion money, just to go straight to them.
Well, then, about what, what, what they come down here, Rob?
It doesn't go to whoever it was that was here last week, misrepresenting them.
Well, maybe come back and represent right, maybe some money.
What about, the money that y'all have given to, supposed to be given to Kevin Lawden?
This money's gonna go to you all, that's where I want him, mine to go.
Well.
If you already gave Kevin Lawden.
No.
No.
The total, that's, that's, that's it, right?
Best gentleman writes the check, sir.
Yeah, the total, the total from all of them, Lord, is eleven hundred dollars, and, but, uh, if they got, if they have got a five oh one C three, I need it, if we can't find it.
They got, try to give them for it, you, you gotta talk to them.
No, we don't have that.
Thanks, Jerry.
I need to say something. We, we sent the D A D.
I need to say something.
This is our, our, uh, honor guard commander, Don Chad.
Folks, uh, I'm a very laid back guy, I don't, we have all volunteers in the honor guard, I don't boss them around, I just, I'm the head of them, I try to, to identify the site. I put, uh, three letters into the Campbell County mayor, two of them got lost, and the third one I took to his office, and I, and I went in, I said, are you gonna get, give us money, or what? And he said, yes, I said, I would, and I would, that was, uh, the mayor before, who we have now, so he walked my letter through, and we got money, I mean, it was for the Campbell County Honor Guard, Kevin got the check, and he got half of it to Jellicoe, and me, us half, that was the county mayor. And, uh, that was wrong, because they didn't do anything about it.
Kevin, he was.
Get them funds, I'm the one that walked all his letters through, and I'm the one that talked to the mayor, and he walked it over to, to Spursec, and turned it in for us, I don't know how much money they gave us, but Kevin got it all, and he give Jellicoe half, and give us half.
I'm confused, Jacksonville doesn't have an honor guard, Carroll doesn't have an honor guard, Campbell County does, why is Jellicoe separate?
Third is different, third is called, uh, American Legion, American Legion, Honor Guard.
Well, right now, I'm having problems with Jellicoe, because half of my guys wanna go up there and help them, um, they don't go through me, they just show, because they call them, and they go up and help them, and I, I called, uh, Gary before he died, I called him, and I said, Gary, if you need help during the funeral, call me, and I'll help you if I can, and he said he would, and two days later, he's got killed, and, uh, so that sort of messed that up, I think.
Gary, Gary was over to Donald, or, he's over to honor guard, or, or, Gary?
He wasn't, he was, he left us, when I first changed, uh, commander of the honor guard, uh, Gary was my vice commander, well, it came to one meeting in a year, so he started his own thing over there, I didn't know anything about it, but.
I'm gonna renew my motion, that if, if Terry says it's eleven hundred dollars, that we give, uh, Campbell County Honor Guard eleven hundred dollars for my discretion money, and when you provide him a five oh one C three, he can do that.
Do you ready to motion, Bill?
I'm ready to motion.
How do you say?
If you all want the money?
We want the money.
Or if the mayor goes walking the money, or get that.
Actually, we need the money.
But we didn't want you to think that we was getting money. We understand that now.
We didn't.
We don't, we don't go to him discretion money, it's just, that's what I'm doing. But, Don, that, that mean you got getting, uh, uh.
Oh, Boston. Uh, 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 I can't hit the jury, Mayor, I'm death of the door, huh?
A friend of mine, Bob Hearn, passed away recently, and Bob, on his will, following a brand new thing, and I love that, it was great, he was, he was such a good guy, and these guys do a great job.
Oh, they do, they do a good job, we, we try to give it.
You do, you do a great job, and I know his family, pretty soon.
I want y'all to know that what's happening, that Kevin is overstepping himself, we support him, when he does the, 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 we support him, when he's not in charge of us, he know he come in, he's feeling, listen, it's a big shock, now come then.
That's what, that's what he does. In fact, he's, he's.
He's running for office. We want you guys to know that we're honest, so.
We're honest, we're on the mound.
I'm not sure what's totally, if I'm aware of what I gave.
Yeah.
We're not here to get any, we're here to.
He just, he just, Don, you're gracious.
Honest, and upright, uh, our vice commander's not here.
Are you on date night?
Well, I did, you know, but, 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 uh, we want you to understand that we take care of our own vans, I, I make sure they're holding, all that stuff, and pick them and wash them when I can, so, that's what we do, we're all, all these guys in the, in the committee is honest, so we got to.
And, and, I'm trying to say, is Nancy still here, or she's gone?
Who?
Nancy, Nancy here, Nancy, her, her.
Uh, she's still here. She's here, at, uh, Thursday, uh, holiday, you're coming out.
Yeah, we are, I mean, I've got.
The rest of you guys have come to?
Well, most of us, we got to be in horse, kind of, ten thirty, you know, and, you gotta thank Nancy Green, seven o'clock, yours is six o'clock, one p.m., when you move the tires, a little bit, or?
Wrong time.
You know? You got serious, you're a shot.
I know everybody's duty, I know that, but, we have to get the church, we can get it, we have to get it.
Well, what you come out, well, I mean, uh, that I can, that's what the real story is, why they came up.
I recognize, we pass the new university.
What we do, when a guy joins, it comes to three funerals, they go up to, where you don't send, invite him? We did, we can.
I still don't know why there's two different factions, why, anybody?
Did y'all get to go right here with Jellicoe?
Well, that's, that's. I know, I know, but that's why we're here, we want you to know that.
I'm not, I'm, I'm.
We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't.
You know, because you don't have to see it, you know, like, man.
And you, uh, you have to, we appreciate you getting, you know?
I do, I, uh, I was made as chairman. It's just made, counsel.
Well, this is the best chapter of forty-nine, yes.
There was one other thing, I know, Larry, you said that, if, uh, if Kevin was supposed to draw a plaque, present to the council, he's doing that, and he's not even a physician, he just, represent the Campbell County Honor Guard when he done that, that's, you're, you're looking at the Campbell County Honor Guard, and we weren't aware, that they wouldn't even wanna do, and, and I'm not saying that you're not do that, I'm just saying that they went through the wrong.
Don't bring you one to us, we'll make sure that, you do one for us, and, uh, we, we handle how, we'll make sure that, uh, Campbell County Honor Guard only, and I signed it, and where it's going.
Why, why y'all here, I wish you, y'all would promote the ornaments that's going on that tree up there for the veterans, if you buy an ornament for ten dollars, then we put your name on a plaque, and it doesn't have to be, to be one veteran, or anybody that's a veteran, that you want to have a plaque and an ornament, we put your name on a plaque, and be on the street, right back there, for everybody to go down, read the name, if everybody that's been a veteran, that's got an ornament on that tree, y'all put the word out, we sure appreciate it.
Was that done, to go through the honor guard as well?
Anybody, great job.
Anybody.
I know, but as far as adding the tree and all that, was that done?
From all veterans, this is a living tree for veterans who hold.
We just come down here to make our work.
Billy, Billy McCullough, he was my buddy.
He made you nine.
He pointed, and, uh, so, I called him, coming back, and it, and he run for mayor for one, for manager, and he got it, but he lasted a week, he quit, because that guy quits all the time, he quit three times, so, probably, he was a jerk, so.
He's, 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 he's.
He's a man that would. I'm, I'm. I love him, but he, he's a quitter, man, he's, 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 he's in there.
We don't, we, we don't, I can't stand that. One thing, first of all, one thing about these old guys here, I may be the mayor, I may be Don Chad, but I've got five hours of soldiers, and likely as a lot, that's what we don't, that's what I'm, okay, y'all, thanks, thank y'all.
Thank you, Don.
Good luck, Don, wish, we'll all try to be there.
Okay.
Is there any more comments?
Uh, they're letting us say more, uh, we're not visiting Jellicoe, uh, American Legion Honor Guard, we're, they do a good work this way, so we wanna let you know that that's not us, that, that we're here, and ask the council for.
Well, to be honest, I thought it's, I was, it was bad.
No, it's not, but, they're the American Legion, and we call them the Jellicoe, because that's what American Legion's.
You all do a great job for our veterans.
I appreciate that, that's, that's, that's our purpose of this thing, it's not about this.
I know my brother-in-law household, they're just very proud.
Yep, he's been, he's powerful, he was, he was, he had a, he had a good voice, and.
We want to hear the thing you heard, you say, anything about this, you say, honor God, everything what we do should be to honor, uh, our brothers, every time we gather at a grave site somewhere, we're there to, to pay our respect and honor of all and common that, we want it to be, we're, we're men of God, we preach, uh, uh, we, we teach that that living for God is the most important thing, we don't need people to be misleading other people, trying to do things, uh, underhanded, like it seems like being done, we're here to let you know we are the Campbell County Honor Guard.
We done a hundred and fifteen journals so far this year.
Hundred and fifteen, but that's our, that's our purpose, right?
I appreciate it, I appreciate God's coming, thank you, guys, is there any more comments?
Retract that, that letter.
We will.
In the press.
Nancy's here, Nancy's here, she.
I don't mean to talk too much, but.
Well, you can do it, I'm gonna do it, yeah, Nancy do it for us.
I don't mean to talk too much, but I agree, while they're here, like the, the honor guard, y'all did my dad's funeral, and you did my brother's funeral both, and it meant a whole lot, I mean, it just.
That's what it's all about.
It's, it's really touching, you, you.
It is, some people think my, some people think my family were nothing, but you guys made us feel like something.
Any more comments?
I got, I got, I got one. Well.
We're leading, we're sending.
We got, we, talk about it, thank y'all.
Hey, hey, you were telling, that was great. I appreciate you all coming in and.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, I forgot, hey, buddy, how are you?
Very, very. Yeah, I'm, I'm.
You got into something.
I'm good.
They did, they did, and pride your best, and make that work the right way, and when you see something show up, that's not a hard thing, and it makes you feel happy, you all have been this way.
Okay, right, we've done, we're done.
Okay, you all have been this way.
Preacher, they didn't shut up, pre.
He's pulling rank on you, right?
I know, thank y'all, boy, right on you.
See you guys.
Yes, sir.
I got, I got a comment.
Myself, our family, and the council, and her family, we will wish everybody, our employees, a very, very Christmas.
Is everything, yes, can I say anything? Stan? Yes, where?
From St. Shulby Hill, for Nancy Green, our two thousand and nineteen Christmas parade grand rehearsal, Thursday, December the fifth, starting at seven P M, at the Honorable Church. The Whitey go Christmas tree is Friday, December the sixth, at six P M. Downtown merchants country Christmas event is scheduled for December sixth, thirteenth, and twentieth, from four to seven P M, from my understanding, they're supposed to meet over in Freedom Bar with Christmas caroling, things like that. The Five K Santa Trug is Saturday, December the seventh, starting at nine A M. Two thousand and nineteen Christmas parade is Saturday, December the seventh, uh, starting at six P M, and the employee Christmas dinner is Thursday, December the twelfth, eleven, one.
We, we, we.
Hey, Stan, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, you said something about the downtown merchants.
They're, they are planning a downtown merchants country Christmas event, it's scheduled December the sixth, thirteenth, and the twentieth, from four to seven, it's the downtown merchants, from my understanding, that's got together, and we're having something every Friday up until Christmas, to try to bring in business for downtown, where they got the, the traffic issue.
Okay, and nothing about that, of course, we're out of city limits, so. I had no thing about that, of course, we're out of city limits, so.
Anything else?
Our plain of orders and resolution number one. Orders twenty nine, Jane Dyche O six, amending that. Orders twenty seven, Jane Dyche O three. The city permitting street use of A T Vs, updated permits. This is deferred in final reading. What's the council's pleasure? Have a motion, Mr. Wilson, have a second. Secretary Trump, call us in.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number two, raise that. Resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty two, resolution administration service for community development partners for the S T P payment project number two. That's, uh, Big Street project. What's the council's pleasure?
Well, I can make it the mayor, the district.
Have a motion, uh, have a second.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins? Ms. Thompson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number three. Resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty three, resolution engineering service for Canyon Canyon, S T P payment project number two. What's the council's pleasure?
Move on there.
Have a motion, Mr. Wilson, have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Carlos, hand.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins? Ms. Thompson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under administration, number one, employees insurance agreement. We discussed that in workshop. And y'all need those quotes. And, uh, what's the council's pleasure?
There was a little problem, you know, don't forget.
Can I call number three?
Number three, yeah.
I'd like to add that we can, we can, we can bench it.
Have a motion, Mr. Wilson, have a second. Ms. Thompson, call Roseanne.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number two. Approval of five hundred dollars donation to the Campbell County Chamber for downtown merchants holiday event. What's the council's pleasure? I think there's money in that beside you, Terry. We haven't seen any said to me. There's money to this side.
I think we, we.
Okay, okay.
What are you gonna do? I'll take that. It's, it's from, uh, I think there's, it's already in the contribution account in the general, in the general, uh, the general government. But if there's not, we will make it from the account in the general government to that. Out of, out of the general government. That's, that's a general budget we've got where it's got all those counts and what's in there, but it's in the, the two years.
Other than general fund account.
Yeah.
It didn't, well, it's, it's.
For certain hours.
It's in general fund, but that's, that's the accounts, got all those accounts in it. Your all's contributions is in your account. Those are contribution account generally, and that account, I think, we need to be.
This is. There's money.
There's money in that whole budget.
Check, check.
That's what I.
I'll make the.
I have a motion, have a second. Have a, Mr. Carlos.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number three. Motion to suspend the rules for using twin cane instructions for constructions on the safe route to school grant. I need a motion to suspend your rules. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Secretary Callow, stand.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. And this approved using twin cane instructions for construction of the safe route to school grant. This thing's been going on about three years. We may do it or die. Have a motion, Mr. Wilson, have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Archer.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Under police department. A true memorandum of understanding with Tennessee Bureau of Investigation. For using one of our police officers as a drug task force officer, T B I. Uh, we discussed that in workshop and we have a anger, uh, uh, direct for T B I, David Raffensett, to council, public council's pleasure.
Well, when I, when I come. I think it'd be a good thing. The mayor.
Yeah. He has a job. I have a second.
Second.
Call my hand.
Somebody tell me about, how was you doing work.
You can get a, take a picture. T B I, and. And.
Now, chief, you mentioned what he is. There's a, uh, a memorandum of understanding for the utilized officer in this particular area. And we share a fund that people receive. I had a, I had a, see, uh, 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 uh. They have a paper officer out of pocket here and it's not, it's not a big time. We have, uh, basically the same agreements that they should pass towards here in U S March Service. Where they need, if they come into the area, they have a officer that's basically serves as a gang.
Thank you, Tom. I don't know why you didn't get one. Y'all got. Want to give a motion?
Yes.
Have a second, Bill, and Carlos, yeah?
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, Bill, you kill Matt and then it's crap. All right. You may just come to the council now.
They are a little vision, uh, December twenty eighth, we're taking taking, uh, just taking again, you take the game with the price of my bird. Taking nine hundred and seventy, parents and children, we're calling it five chillers, a one thirty game, December twenty eighth. Y'all won't be a part of it, just let me know.
What, John, you didn't do this one about two, three years?
This is.
Here's your account.
And we.
Nine, nine hundred and seventy, tell it. It gets bigger every year. We have about ninety-eight percent attendance rate. Sometimes they miss and we see it and just can't tell. The kids really and a lot of kids never have an opportunity. So let's probably start that and it's, it's been a real success.